I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any questions, changes, additions to the existing agenda? Okay, got a motion by Rick Siler to approve the agenda. Second it. So if there's no other comments, all pay or say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, agenda is approved 4-0. First thing on the agenda, I assume Ken, you're gonna take care of this, or you're carrying the variants?
We will. Mr. Ryan, from the planning commission, at the meeting last week, variants B5 2019 for wetland setback, variants for construction of a new home. Kaye Witt is the applicant on this variants request. Subject lot is currently a vacant lot located at 602 Eastland Avenue Southeast. It was platted back in 2007 and then from that development was largely not fully developed, the street and utilities until the past couple of years. And that is why the lot has been platted since 2007. Since that was platted back in '07, we have adopted a new section 737 of the zoning ordinance entitled land and water preservation. We actually got a lot more specific with our buffer requirements for wetlands in that revision. Prior to 734 being adopted, we had a blanket 40-foot buffer around any wetland for basically an area of buffer to clarify runoff for the water from lots before it goes into the wetland. And then also a blanket 50-foot setback from the edge of buildings to the edge of the wetland. I just wanna note, if this is platted today, the buffer probably would be closer to 35 feet. It's really dependent on quality of the wetland and specifically that would be looked at at that time. But based on the quality of the wetland that we've seen in other areas in that development have been recently platted 35 feet, will most likely be what would apply. Over 41% of the vacant lot is impacted by the wetland buffer area or the setback of 50 feet to the building edge. And that would prevent a home from the size and appearance of others in the neighborhood from being constructed in that lot. And basically kind of cause a little bit difference of appearance and value of the home than than others in the neighborhood. I do wanna point out that the home as proposed would not encroach into the 40-foot buffer area, which is actually an easement on the lot. So we'd like permission to build up to the edge of that easement, but not go into it. So really they're just varying from that extra 10 feet from the buffer requirement to the home. The home is on a lot that's actually owned by Jason and Melissa Drager and Kaye Witt is the one constructing it for them. And that's why they're the lead on the applicant form for them. Here's an overhead view of the certificate of survey with some things pointed out, so I'll just go over these for you. Green is the wetland boundary that was delineated back in 2007. The 40-foot buffer area in orange. And you can see the edge of the house going right to the edge, the section of the garage corner of the home going to that edge. And then the additional 10 feet for the home setback. There was noted in the planning commission meeting that the house was flipped to better fit on the lot, so that the garage was actually on the north side of the lot versus the south side. If it had not been flipped, there would have been more of an impact into the wetland buffer area, probably to the tune of an additional 5 feet or so. But in order to lessen that, Witt had proposed on flipping the home and it fits better within the existing constraints of the lot. Just another view of the homes, a very similar style to the homes in the neighborhood. This home particularly is not a walkout like the home directly to the next door, but is a full basement walkout. So as we noted again, this is through the planning commission meeting on the 28th of August, which was the meeting last week. We did have one resident, Jeremy Lane, at 64 Eastland Avenue Southeast, comment on backyard drainage concerns. We had discussion at length about the drainage swale provided in the backyard. We had some other questions about the wetland complex and the drainage pond located further to the northeast of the development. That's been subject to review and revision by the city and Witt and their engineer INS. And then we also specifically talked about how the water level, some of the big rains we've had in the wetland, which is the wetland in question here for the variants, has risen to a level due to, as our city engineer noted, being the second wettest year on record. And then some rather large events have just caused that level to rise. But no homes have been in danger of any water inundating them at any level opening. Everything is met. And has been reviewed by the city engineer to be in compliance, although some pictures were shown from the applicant to the planning commission that water, that rather large water streams were flowing in the backyards, but well within the drainage swale as intended. Jason Witt, the applicant representative, also commented at the meeting that they were considering installing tie lines in the backyard drainage. Again, that's an issue not necessarily related to the variants, but that was commented at the meeting. And then Mr. Witt also noted that the home was flipped to better better fit on the lot and lessen it back to that wetland, which I've already kind of commented on drawing there. Ultimately, the planning commission did recommend approval on 4-0 vote, forward to the council here tonight for recommendation. So as was included in the back of the resolution, here consideration tonight for approval of variants B5 2019 that would vary from that 50-foot structure setback to the wetland edge. Back to 40 feet for the construction of this new home with the findings listed in the staff report. And then one condition was that on the wetland buffer line back in 2007, we didn't require the buffer signs to be installed. But as a condition of the wetland, we are recommending that be a condition of approval, so that our city required buffer signs are at the corners of the lot to delineate that buffer line. Basically, no mo area intended to be left in a natural state. Some photos of the site, just looking from Eastland Avenue to the west. Not much to note from the road. You get a little bit of a grade. I think the driveway on this one is nearing our 10% limit on the driveway slope. But more importantly, as we look in the photo on the right-hand side of the photo, looking to the northwest towards the wetland, you can see kind of sil fence near the edge of the wetland. The space in the photo identified the corner of that garage that's basically in that 50-foot setback area. So that's probably the best thing to note there. Some more photos looking north at the wetland area. The lot directly to the north has more of an issue when a home is proposed to be built there. To fit a home to fit into the neighborhood, we've kind of known that since the lot was platted, that would likely be another candidate for a variance. And then just some photos of other homes in the area. Obviously, the only question is a two-story design. These are walkout homes that are further up the block, just walk in on the first floor. Similar square footage overall, however. And then just the home across the street, line up in the final photo. So I think with this, I will turn it over to the council. If you have any questions, we do have Jason Witt from the applicant here tonight. And then Mr. Lane also is in attendance here tonight. Should you have any questions, you can.
Okay.
The opposing, the resident that opposed it or questioned it, was he satisfied with your answer?
You could ask Mr. Lane. He's at the meeting here tonight.
Satisfied with your answer?
Yeah, so I was, the purpose of my attendance at the planning commission was to inform the planning commission of just how much water is back there. And if I were a resident building there, I'd wanna know how much water is back there, and there's a lot. I shared some photos with, I know it's the second wettest, you know, second wettest summer or year on record, but last year was very similar. And there's just a significant amount of water back there. And if if I were building a home, I'd wanna know just how much water is back there and know that I'm not gonna have much of a backyard. And yes, you know, originally I was concerned about drainage. Both Ken and the city engineer shared with me the drainage is occurring as it should. So my goal was to share the facts, and the facts are, there's a lot of water back there. And in consideration of this, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that.
Jeremy, do you have that video where it's actually running through that stream area?
I do.
They might wanna see that. He showed it to the planning commission. And it was, it was a massive rainstorm.
I can actually pull it up here.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody. Take away the hands. One second.
But Ken, does the Drager family know that water?
I don't know if they specifically know. From the city standpoint, there's not a problem with this. Water's flowing exactly where it was planned to flow within the swale area.
And in accordance with the drainage.
Yeah, but in accordance with the drainage.
Right, I'm just thinking of the resources of the city staff, because if the family doesn't, I mean, if they know and they made that choice, that's their deal. But I don't want them to call six months from now and say, hey, I got all this water back here and it's the city's fault.
But that responsibility lies between the seller of the property and the purchaser of the property, unless they come in and happen to ask us for questions to go over the drainage plan or the drainage plan.
Yeah.
So those are private discussions.
Okay.
That need to occur with an educated purchaser. With the developer who they're buying the lot from.
Right, but it does become our issue when a resident comes back to us and then has an issue with something that they blame the city or the engineering on.
Well, but.
So I'm just trying to prevent that. Like I said, if the family knows, it doesn't matter, but.
But in many cases, that requires the purchaser to do their appropriate due diligence when they buy that lot or take a look at those factors when they're out purchasing that lot or looking at building a house with a developer. That that's not to say that we can't answer the questions if they come to us and wanna sit down and go through development questions for the lot. That Ken does that all the time and the staff does, or the engineers involved in that process. But in many cases, it's not unrealistic to assume in some cases that those purchasers or property owners that are buying property from a developer don't necessarily know all of the questions to ask. And it sounds like in this case is that it may end up being buyer beware that when they look at that, that Ken can show you the the grading plan for the development. Most of us as laypeople don't understand what those look like. And so to understand where the drainage goes into your book and how it affects my lot or the purchaser's lot ends up being questions that should be asked of the developer at the time of purchasing that lot. But it doesn't always happen.
Right. So I'll just run through the photos that Mr. Lane had actually provided to the planning commission here. So this is actually the drainage swale running through the backyard. And we'll pull through the photos here. You can see it a little more. Very concentrated flow through the backyard. Mr. Lane indicated that it hadn't dried out for quite some time into the month of August. Not surprised by that. We have many arms, including my own in the area here, that had the same issues going on here as I could mow for almost two months on a very steep slope. So not surprised by that.
Did you send yourself a letter for a new yard?
No. But we have had a lot of calls about that issue throughout town. This is just another view, kind of showing the lotting question here is actually their backyard. Can you see the water continuing through that drainage swell making its way to the wetland there as designed? And I do, and I did talk to and review these photos with city engineer Chris Cabot last week prior to the planning commission meeting. And he noted, but it looks exactly like water's going where it should. We reviewed the as-built grading for the homes in the area and everything was built as it should be. A couple of their photos, just water going into that wetland. Again, this is the backyard of the subject home, just to your order of that.
Once you excavate it is complete, then you're gonna have a more better pitch.
Correct. This lot has not been finally graded for that yet. And then just a view further up. So you have a lot of water that obviously comes out of the homes as you go further up the block on the backyard, and they do go through the backyard.
Which way is that flowing?
It's flowing to the north.
So to the other lot?
It's flowing, flowing to the subject lot in the wetland. Yep, it's all going to the wetland.
I thought it was going the other way up.
Yep. Here's the video, if I can get it to play. This is from the July, July 15?
Yep.
So again, I got over to the city engineer and felt that everything was kind of functioning as it should. And I do have a couple more photos from the winter snow melt when we had snow and held water that went rain. I know, again, I had a whole lot of calls from when this snow and rain event happened. You did have to make little channels to get the water flowing. But again, nothing, nothing unusual related to all the grading plans done or anything like that. I still wanna pop up the grading plan very quickly for everybody here. Hopefully I pulled the right one up. Uh, yeah, this is, so the lotting question is actually the one that I'm outlining here, the wetland boundary. You can see the contours as they kind of move up. So that's the drainage swale we were seeing in the photos that lead right to the, right to that wetland area there. Not seeing anything, anything out of place or out of order there. Everything goes to the wetland, even kind of low point of that development. The wetland complex actually does extend over to homes in the backyard along Fifth Street, North, Southeast over there. So it's a bigger complex than just what you're seeing on the Eastland lot.
Jason, did you flip that house just because you were worried about any of the water?
No, to fit it within the 40-foot setback.
Okay.
Yeah. I have walked the lot with the owner, Jason Drager, and he was in, he's in construction. He's in pipeline construction, or he was. So he understands that part of it and he knows that there's water coming through his backyard. So we've gone through that with him.
Okay, great.
Any other questions or comments?
Just from my knowledge, Ken, is the easement with the city or the Minnesota?
It's with the city.
The city.
Yep, yep. MPCA actually required that we put these restrictions in place back in 2002 initially, and then we just continued to kind of refine them to better manage local conditions. And then specifically now we look at the quality of the wetland basin and assessment, which like I said, likely in this case would have been reduced less than the 40 feet. But there's really no point in going back through that when we can go through the variance process.
Okay, then easement on the swell.
Is there an easement on the swell? Uh, there is an easement in the backyards. I don't believe it covers the entire swell area. Ideally, we try to get the majority of that in the easement areas, but in this one, it does go off the side of that just a little bit. There's a 5-foot or easement on here on the drainage swale outside that a little bit. Nothing unusual again for this development compared to others in town.
Just one other question. I don't know if I can go up there or not, but if if the thought is to approve, then I, you know, one question I would have for continuity is not to have to flip the house. If it's five more feet, is there consideration for that? I understand that this is for a variance for 10 feet. That would have to be resubmitted, et cetera. But I don't know if there's any conversation there, because basically what's gonna happen is the driveway is gonna be on the opposite side of the lot. Their grade room is gonna be right in front, right where ours is, and there's not continuity between the houses. So if you think about your own street and your own houses, where the driveways are always on one side of the house. So that that way, when you're out there, you're looking at the garage, not into the grade room. So I don't know if there's any perspective on that. I just bring that that issue up as well.
There's no requirement. I imagine that way, I think that was one of the considerations for the variants, to try to keep the house of the same general looking style as far as the orientation. There's not a requirement that that can be considered, but it could be something that you do consider. I think in the case of staff's review of this is that one of the findings is trying to keep it at the minimum. Variants would alleviate the practical difficulty of having the wetland on the lot. It's gonna be hard to make that argument by further allowing it to go in beyond 40 feet. That's my recommendation on that, but.
How much farther is it?
About 5 feet. We're guessing. We haven't necessarily. I would not recommend that.
Well, our house has the driveway back to that.
Yeah, yours does. I didn't know that there was a statistic.
Any other questions?
No, I'm here, I'm, I'll take the motion that we.
Okay, I got a motion by Rick Siler to approve the variants.
Second.
Second by Bruce Wolf. No other comments or questions? All pay or say aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, pass this 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, next one.
All right, the next variants I have from last week's planning commission is variants V6 2019. This is a fence type variance along, excuse me, northwest, the applicant, Cody Bolter. And we'll get into the background of this one. Property owner lives at 1211 Grant Avenue Northwest. He's applied for a variance to have a 6-foot-tall privacy fence in his rear yard, which does not meet the ordinance requirement, because it would exceed 6-foot tall within 30 feet of a road right of way. That's kind of part one of the variance request. The main reason for that fence to be in that area is to have a 6-foot-tall fence for his dog to be contained in his backyard. It's been known and noted at the planning commission meeting last week that it can jump. Fence is shorter than 6 feet tall.
4 feet.
Or, excuse me, 4 feet tall.
Yeah, correct.
Uh, the fence type is proposed to be a 6-foot-tall wooden privacy fence. Uh, the other part of the variance request, this is kind of in the discussion at the planning commission meeting, was he also proposes to have the fence extend forward of the rear line of the home. So that it lines up with the front edge of the house, but our ordinance does not allow fencing in that area. And I'll go over a map to kind of show specifically the area in question there, but that is not something that staff recommended. But the planning commission ultimately did recommend being included in the variance request, and they made a couple of alterations to the findings to do that. Here's a air photo of the area. You can see on the air photo, applicant's home was not yet built. Do wanna point out the home directly to the west, actually was issued a variance in 2018 for a 6-foot-tall fence in their backyard. So as far as the fence in the backyard is concerned, I think that this request is very much in line with that and aesthetically would look very good. It's just a portion. I won't get into the detail here in a second. So on the site survey here on the overhead, this green line that runs. Kind of through the middle of the backyard, that is the setback line for where a 6-foot fence would have to be set back. From Sixth Street in the backyard to that point, CD's up more than half of the backyard. The house directly to the west, you can see on the survey, their 6-foot tall fence does extend to that property line along Sixth Street Northwest. So I think aesthetically and just from a privacy and the security for the dog, having the fence kind of in the outline with the red and the red boxes here in the case of fence. I think that that was recommended by staff to be approved. I think that fits quite well. The area in question is this area that kind of hatched in the red here. And basically, the ordinance does not allow 6-foot-tall fence anywhere forward of this point of the home into that side yard and primary at home. So this area is really the area in question that staff did not recommend. Mr. Bolter made the argument at the meeting that there's a slope there and staff does not dispute that there's a slope, starting in basically the front edge of the house sloping down to the backyard. His argument, the planning commission agreed with us, that made that area hard to maintain and generally be unusable if it were not included fenced in area. Staff's position is that just from an aesthetic standpoint, we don't allow that throughout town. And even with the slope, that it would cause an appearance that home to vary from the neighborhood by having a fence of 6-foot tall come up that front corner and kind of cross a pretty wide area, actually all the way across over the lot line and then to the back. Brings the fence forward in the visual aesthetic of the neighborhood. So that's really the main point of discussion that we had at the meeting. Ultimately, the planning commission did, after debating it for quite some time at the meeting, did ultimately want to include that area in the recommendation that you're reviewing tonight. And that did pass in a 5-0 recommendation. I just wanna point out the reason for the 4-0 recommendation, the first item, the 5-0 on this one is because Mr. Ryan had showed up during this agenda item. So I do wanna point out that's not a typo. We did not have 5 for the first item on the agenda, but it was passed in a 5-0 recommendation. So ultimately, staff does recommend approval of the variants. And I do again, wanna call into discussion the area that the planning commission recommended, but staff would not give that fence area. And that the resolution as currently written does include that little box of the area inside of the home in that variance area. So we'll kind of show you on the map here around the photo. So normally, if you can see where I'm pointing, the point you're at, this back corner of the house, the fence should not, by ordinance, be allowed to be over 6 feet tall as you go forward of that. So basically, this whole area inside of the house is not normally allowed to be fenced in at 6-foot tall. And that is where the planning commission noted it. You can see the steep grade there, and that was one of the findings that the planning commission had been, that that be allowed to be 6 feet tall due to the grade and to keep it more usable in in the backyard.
So it's just the one side he's talking about?
Just the one side. In our ordinance, we do allow fence to go up to the back edge of the third garage stall, which is what most homes do. But this is not the behind the garage area. This is on the side, opposite the garage where we don't normally allow that.
What's the the perception, you know, the the house next door, is it, it looks like it's the or, I mean.
This one here?
Yeah.
So this is a home where we had issued the variants before, and they have their fence coming up. We'll go to the next photo here. So they have their fence coming up that back edge of of their garage in that area as well. So this would also be proposed to come up that corner. It's just a non-garage corner of the home is where we just never, never allowed that to be over the 40-foot tall. And it really is just an aesthetic thing. If you look at the neighborhood, you won't see that in your primary.
But it should be noted that we put that in the.
Correct, language did add it.
So it's agreed to the uniqueness of this situation that we would allow it.
Well, the one right next door there is that's that's 6-foot tall, right?
That is a 6-foot tall fence. Now, this is a variance approved by the council last year, 2018.
Ken, how from that front of the house where the where the fence is gonna go up on the hill there? What is the length of that to the lot line?
Oh, you're talking from.
From the corner, the front of the house.
From this area over?
Yeah.
What's that? Yeah, I'll pull it up here. 45.23. My biggest concern from staff perspective was not creating a situation where others would come in just asking for that. I do recognize, as Ryan noted, the specific finding due to the slope. Just wanna make that very clear. I don't wanna open a box to everybody to do that. So that finding does contain that. The reason to approve it is.
Move the backyard fence up to the front yard.
Yep, it is moving the backyard fence up to the, basically the front edge and into the side yard.
To the front of the house?
Just to the front edge of the house. So we have a rule on the horizon, make sure everyone's very clear of that, if you approve this.
And the reason because, so the planning commission felt that because there's slope, there's not, it's not usable?
Right, and you know, we have the applicant here tonight too, so you could see his perspective on it. But because of that grade right there, that hill, it just, if it went to the back of the house, he has this. he has this, this hill that we were worried about water flow and everything else affecting the fence. They're sitting down at the bottom of that swell. So they moved it up. It just is kind of a dead area within, within the lot.
Very unique situation.
It is a unique situation.
So I don't see there's uniqueness. There's other houses that it hills on the side of the houses. And that's by my house.
Yeah. No, I, it was, like I said, with the planning commission, we reviewed it. We extensively talked about it. I'm not a big fan of it, but yet I understood the applicant's concern with kind of that dead area. So I told him, I said, I recommend you come here tonight because I figured you guys would have questions. Did I not? And, you know, so I'm not a huge fan of it, but given the uniqueness of the circumstances, I voted yes for it. But you guys can, you want, obviously.
But I'm kind of like, Cruz, I don't know what the uniqueness is. I've got houses in Chan that had more severe slopes than that, and that lot is usable.
You want, you should probably get up and speak if you're pleased with your side.
First thing I wanted to just give you this document. I created this myself and I went to all my neighbors on both west side, east side, north side. I asked them if I could put a six-foot fence on top of the hill, if they had any concerns. They did not.
Future owners of houses, they might have concerns. Or other people in the brain might have concerns. So I appreciate what you're doing here, but it doesn't...
I just wanted to make you aware of that, so... No, my biggest concern is, I do have a German Shepherd dog. It's proven in the past that he has jumped over a four-foot fence. Right now, your, I don't know what you call them, laws or covenants, however you say it, does approve for a four-foot fence there. Well, if you already approved for a four-foot fence, why wouldn't you approve for a six-foot? It's only a two-foot difference.
It's not the height of the fence. I think that's not the...
Yeah, I think we've already done the variance, your neighbor's six-foot fence. I don't think that's the issue that I think we're debating is the moving the fence from the back of the building to the front of the house.
Yeah, but you are, according to the variance or the codes, you can put a four-foot fence up to that top of the hill in front of the house.
He is correct in saying, we do allow four-foot fence anywhere on the lot. It's just the height behind that back corner of the home there.
So it's only a two-foot difference. The might be concern for there is that slope is, we're close to the house. It's a pretty high slope there. If you go on the, the other side, it's actually worse of a slope. It's almost vertical, not quite, but very close. It's going to be a water issue, no matter what. It's going to possibly rot all the bottom of that fence. I'm going to be standing twenty...
Why would it rot out the bottom? Would you have at least a two or three or four inch...
It's going to be an inch difference, but still...
Why inch?
That's what the company of Midwest Fence does, inch.
Well, I wonder if you could ask them to make it two inches or three inches.
I guess I don't understand. I see, I see other fences with more clearance than an inch.
Yeah. Well, the other issue is with that grade in that hill, if it's, the fence is on bottom, I'm not going to be able to mow it or anything with there. It's going to be a humanist issue just taking care of this because it's a big slope. It's going to be driving right into that fence. It's going to be a dead zone. No, no one's going to be able to use it. Me or any future residents. Kids aren't going to be able to use it because there's going to be a fence at the bottom. It's a dead zone at that point. If you already allow a four-foot fence anywhere on property with a two-foot difference, I don't see the issue.
Well, I respect your opinion. I appreciate you making comments to clarify things. But I do respect your comments. I don't understand the practical difficulty if the issue is your dog and providing the space for your dog. This variance without that would solve that issue. But having the additional space, I'm not sure what the practical difficulty. I don't, I guess I would agree with how you're describing the practical difficulty. For the hardship of not having that.
Well, it's just going to be a dead space. I'll never be, it's a piece of property on my own personal property that I'll never be able to use. If I include that into the backyard in the fenced zone, it'll actually be used possibly, you know, for kids, for my dog. Otherwise, they'll never be used because it's...
I respect your opinion. I can just, I just know of other houses that have more severe side hills than that. And they, it's just part of their property is a side hill and they mow it. That isn't unusual, unusual. And you're grading it. So I respect what you're saying. I just want to agree with that.
So Ken, is, is the ordinance, they could put a four-foot fence all the way to the fence?
Yes, yep.
My issue, if I put a four-foot there, my dog has jumped over a four-foot fence before, so it needs to be a six-foot, so...
American Kennel Society... It would be four foot because of the slope you're saying.
What I'm proposing is put a six-foot fence all the way.
No, but I'm just saying, if it was flat, it'd be four foot. But if it's such a severe slope, it's not a four feet for your dog.
Still a four-foot fence.
No, but I'm just saying, if, if your dog can jump a four foot, but he can't do a six, if it's, and I don't know what the grade is, you know, what, if it's a forty-five degree or, you know, whatever that...
It, it's not over thirty, I can tell you that because we would have required a retaining wall.
Oh, okay. You know, so that's what I'm just saying, it's four and a half or five feet, even if you put a four-foot because of the slope. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. American, what is it, American Kennel Society, you know, they recommend any big dog, German Shepherd is included on the list, that you get a six-foot fence. Because they have been proven in the past to jump over four and five-foot fences, so... My dog, it has in the past jumped over four foot.
Well, I'm not doubting that. Okay, anyone have any other questions?
And I'm just piggybacking what Chuck says. I don't have any issue with a six-foot fence around that part. My issue is just extending it and it does create a situation that we don't have in right. And I don't see a hardship by granting it. That's just my take on it.
Well, the thing that I kind of, I didn't realize that you could have four foot up to that. Do we have any four-foot houses that you're working?
I can think of one where they actually come forward over the backyard like that. And there's a lot of opinions on that not being very attractive, just from what I've heard on a staff level. Very few people want to go forward to that back corner. So it's a very rare thing, even at four foot.
So the question, we're going to allow a six-foot fence, but not up to the front of the house? Is that what the planning commission said?
No, the planning, planning commission... They recommended allowing the six-foot fence.
And staff doesn't know which one because I'm, I haven't known right now.
Versus a... And I wasn't aware you could have a four-foot fence up to the front of the house.
A four, you can have a four foot anywhere on your lot, right at the lot.
Which kind of changes...
But you'd have to end it almost in the middle of the yard because you, I mean, didn't we just go over this with another one that had an H P R right next to it where you put a privacy fence up there?
That was along a backyard.
That was along the back. Well, I thought that went right up to the front.
So again, the resolution is written with the planning commission's recommendation, including that area on the side of the home up to the front edge at six feet. You did not seem inclined to do that. Findings that are in the staff report don't include that area. So have all the findings either way, you would want to vote on that. We wouldn't have to recreate anything. Just be a matter of which way you want to go and which findings we would want to use.
I'm guessing that it's, the fence all the way up to the front of the house isn't going to fly. Kind of sensing here for these guys. But a six-foot height would fly if you go out in the back. Is that something you live with?
I just don't understand if you, if you approve a four foot, the two-foot difference is very little. That's twenty-four inches. And I still don't understand why you would not approve that.
Well, I think it's an aesthetic thing too and it's...
I've talked, like I said, I've talked to all my neighbors.
I know, I was going to be, I'm not arguing, I voted yes if you remember. And I'm fine with it. I'm just telling what I'm feeling from the, this group. It isn't going to pass that.
Aesthetically wise, it's not an issue.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to tell you.
I'm one of the neighbors. I aesthetically, I think the six-foot would look far superior myself. I've had fences like he's talking to put in that are far more aesthetically pleasing to keep continually the same size. And that grade will cause a problem. If you put it at the bottom, it is steep and the next lot is even going to be worse, so...
The next lot that comes in, the next lot that comes in, they're going to want to be able to do whatever he does, so...
I don't own that lot, you know, I'm not, you know, because of that. I own a lot across.
Are you putting a fence on the next to your neighbor or are you going to use that fence?
No, I'm putting, putting one next to them. They're about four feet into their property line, so I'll be able to put it into mine.
Oh, okay, so you can get a lawnmower through there?
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the variance, six-foot fence all the way up to the front of the house.
I'll second that.
Motion and second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition?
Opposed.
Okay, passes three to one.
My question, do I have to wait for any paperwork or anything? Because I do have a, like I said, Midwest Fence, already a contract waiting.
Yeah, so I'll actually provide you the paperwork tomorrow. Do they have approval to do that and we'll get it recorded at the county. We should be good to go. But I'll, I'll let you know tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to, I'll call tomorrow and tell them everything that's approved.
Yeah, you can tell them it's approved if they want to start ordering.
Okay, okay, that's what I needed, so.
Go here for the record. Can we get the other individual, who was in attendance, and your address?
Can you just state your name and your address just for our record?
I'm crossed. It's not built on right now, so I can...
But there is a, there is an address to that being...
It's on Cleveland and Grant, the corner lot. It's directly across from his home. The lot that is directly across from his house.
And your name is Ken?
Peggy Bolter.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, next.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
John, don't think you've got business for us?
Yes. I can't say it.
I think your drugs are competing.
Well, so we did get five bids, a little bidder is Minnesota Mechanical Solutions. They've been doing this for about five years or kind of new. But they're a spin-off from a company that I got, got absorbed in one of the other companies. And so he went off to do his own thing. So we've actually worked with Mr. Brigham, the president, quite a few times. We actually have proven to do some work in Manquio here this summer already, so... And I believe what you're seeing here is some differences. He's getting relatively low rent and starting up. So he's anxious to do the work. Didn't get any feedback from any of our bidders about any issues, need for timing or anything. You see, we gave one hundred eighty days. I got them enough time to get things. I think you'll see most equipment shipped and ordered almost before the end of the year. Partially so they can claim it on their revenue for the year. We want to give them enough time. The only nervousness we had was if we really pinched the time down, they were worried about, what if we got a really crummy two-week period? They're trying to do it, but they have to come right then because given last winter, there's a little bit of squeamishness of all that. We did only, we did limit the amount of time. We'd be offline with that tank to thirty days because we will be hauling file songs during that time. So we limited the time they could have it offline and work. There's work they can do without that. We didn't want to just let them, they put it up in the... So we're comfortable with the bid. We covered the bidder, has covered everything. I don't know what else to add unless there's questions, I guess.
What do we decide on that holding tank? Is it supposed to material of it? Is there a, like, do we get a warranty on this for...
Oh, for the materials going in, right? So it's the fiberglass piping going in to there?
Is that different from what it was?
Different than what it was. We had, what we called last, and we used PVC, which was a little more susceptible to heat issue than we were seeing. So the fiberglass and stainless steel that we're using is much, much more robust in terms of heat and durability. We will have our, you know, in our construction world, what we get is two years from that contractor. So then we have to make, you know, for his workmanship. But what we've seen with this fiberglass is a much longer lifespan than PVC. Than any instance.
What about from the engineering side of it though? What kind of warranty do we get from...
I'm here to try to solve problems as long as I can and maybe get over.
Glenn, is it in two thousand nineteen's budget or twenty twenty?
It is in two thousand nineteen's budget.
So you have it's not completed in twenty twenty, we'll just...
Yeah, I talked to Patty about it and, and her terms is, as long as it's an ongoing project, it's, it's easily accountable for.
Okay.
What do you think the life expectancy of this will be just around?
Well, I think the piping is, is in that twenty-year timeframe. You've got some pumps and some blower. If you remember the one blower, we're replacing the blower mechanism. And that's because it's been running continuously for seven, eight years. It will need to be replaced in five, but the idea is we now have another blower. When I say blower, it's the actual, just a chunk of the blower where you can pull it up, put it back on the motor. You'll have one to flip back and forth on. With this project, we're putting in a brand-new blower. We're keeping the old blower. And we're going to get it rebuilt for about a third of the cost of what a new one is, just the blower part. And then we'll have that, we're not going to do that today. We'll do that in a few years, rebuild that. Because this blower, as we come to find out, we probably should have been replacing that probably a year ago, probably two years ago. We just really pushed it really hard. So we're going to put that on a rotation, on a five or six-year rotation and then have it sitting there so it's a simple... I don't want to say simple, but take it off-the-shelf type situation, put it in and then set the other one on a pallet and be ready to send that off to be rebuilt for, again, the next rotation. Because it runs twenty-four, four-seven. So the, you can't even say that the next time it's going to go longer because it won't run as often. It runs twenty-four seven. So the wire and care will be the same.
Well, this half million dollars that we're going to spend affect the, no, the consumer? No?
No, it's already built in.
It's already in the whole CIP program.
We talked about that last meeting. It was already built in. Even this included, it didn't change, increase the sewer rates for two thousand nineteen. Any other questions?
Oh, no.
What?
No.
Oh, no, why?
Looked like you were waiting for me to say something.
Well, I thought you were going to make a motion.
I'll make the motion, go ahead and approve it.
Got a motion from Rick Seidler to approve the...
Resolution.
Resolution for the little bit of five thirty seven eight hundred. And I'll second that. If there's no other questions or comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes four zero.
We will let you know when it's cleaned up and ready to be filled back in the kitchen if he wants to inspect the process.
Oh, Rick, Rickery nominated himself to go over.
I want to go down there when they're doing it and see if the construction workers, they could break it, they might be...
Thanks, John. Thank you. Hey. Mr. Boris is going to...
Honorable mayor and... Honorable mayor and council, I have before you the renewal for the animal control contract through a resolution. This would be a contract for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one through December of two thousand twenty-two. This is a renewal. We have had Minnesota critter gitters since two thousand seven. And this would be the third contract at the same rate. A monthly contract price of twelve thousand, or twelve hundred dollars per month. We have not seen an increase in that budget over those years. And Minnesota Critter Gitters has always been very responsive to our needs here in the community. They respond... has always been very responsive to our needs here in the community. They respond very timely and are always willing to help out on other animal concerns or issues. So I think it would, my recommendation would be to approve the contract for the additional three years.
Do you know how many communities they service?
With this contract that we reviewed, there's our five communities in there, that generally were kind of together as the initial group that started with them. Lee Sewer, Elko New Market, Jordan, Bell Plain, and then the Craig. They have additional contracts with, I believe Scott County now, Lee Sewer County, Montgomery, some of the other cities. They're, they may be for less services than what we have within our contract. The only real change to this contract that we were looking at is, two, they added another person, person's name as an additional animal officer that may respond, and then also, they would reimburse the city if they came and got an animal, cat or dog, and took custody of it. If the owner showed up and then paid the fees for that, they would reimburse the city 40% of the impound base fee. That went away, she had talked, the last couple of years, we've talked about, you know, if they had additional monies from the city, they would be able to provide better foster care, trying to get these dogs housed, and have more money for food and different things. And she said, well, initially, she talked about, at several meetings ago, she talked about, maybe, you know, we could ask for donations from the city, and I said, we're already contracted with you, so I would rather see you take away that reimbursement and use those funds rather than asking for more money for the overall service. So that was what she decided to do, then.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
How often is it used? I'm just kind of curious.
Um.
I mean, every week, or is it?
Generally, it's weekly. They do probably four to five animals a month that they come and pick up. They, like I said, they're also very good about wild critters, DOA animals that got struck by a car or something, they'll come and pick them up. Dave is Sandra's wife, our husband, he, his expertise was in wild critters, so if we have any raccoon problems or any other wild animals, he's able to come and handle those also. And generally, they do it under the guise of our contract, even though our contract doesn't officially state that. And then if it is on a private property issue, if it, if it doesn't actually fit our contract close to what it needs to, then they would do a subcontract and maybe charge it out privately to the homeowner. But yeah, they do offer services. He, he has trapped a beaver in a couple of locations for us that were causing problems.
You have a couple of due diligence type of questions. Do we have a copy of the general liability policy at the city?
Yeah, insurance certificate that we have.
We have that, maybe in the city. And then, has anyone from the city staff been at the location recently, in the last year or so?
Uh, in the last year, I have, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they had, they moved to Henderson, Minnesota, two, two and a half years ago. Uh, so we, most of the chiefs showed up and we reviewed their facility twice now. And then I did make contact with her last week. I know there's the number of the kennels in there, and at their previous location, they were within those numbers. When they moved initially, they weren't hitting those numbers, and we addressed it by, hey, do you have enough kennels and an appropriate number that handle all the animals? She said they did. This year, I just, I confirmed with her, are you at 10 dog kennels and 20 cat available kennels? And she indicated yes, that they are at that number now. So.
Did you touch, they've also had an inspection periodic by the state of Minnesota?
Yeah, they get inspected every year by the state of Minnesota, through their licensing. And then also, we worked with the Animal Community Society from Carver Scott, and they were doing, kind of, well, we did a mutual agreement with them for them to do inspections and to work with Minnesota Critter Gitters, just to make sure that they were doing what they can. And some of the, some of that process was to assist them in building a rapport with them to maybe help in fostering animals, and when they do pick up a stray, that they're able to find places to be able to foster that out.
I don't want to break you, Sean, but I'm just curious, what is the procedure when an animal is collected? What timeframe do you give an owner to respond and collect their animal, and what, at one point, do they dispose of the animal?
Um, I think Minnesota statute is, says the designated days.
Although it's not in the contract?
No, it's not, no. So it's, yeah, it's held by the animal organisms of the state, but normally, they go well beyond those days. They will continue to feed it and care for it, in an attempt to locate a home for it.
Any other comments, questions?
How will we accept the resolution for the improvement of the contract for the critter gitters?
Okay, second. I got a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Bruce Wolf. There's no other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0.
Thank you. And if anybody does have any questions, feel free to.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike?
Um, thank you, Ray. There's a follow-up to the completion this last year of the new great senior living, Praha Village, as you know, it's moving to close out one of the action items contained within the agreement that the HRA approved back in, I believe, 2017. And that's putting together the issuance of the TIF note that for reimbursement, is that they have to provide proof of all these pressures that were required in certain facets of that, and so we've got the word from Julie Bates and the attorney out of Scott's office that we work with, and the HRA needs to take action, recommendation from the attorney and staff to put together the documents so that we can issue the TIF note to the developer. And so, in order to do that, we have to have a special HRA meeting, and talking to the mayor, trying to look at when we could do this, looking ahead to the next council meeting. We had talked about the possibility of either starting a preliminary review of the 2020 general fund budget and debt service, following the council meeting on the 16th. And then the, also, if you remember, set up a special meeting, if it was necessary, which likely it will be, to have on Wednesday, September 18th. And so what I'd like to do, with your permission, is that instead of doing partial budget on that night of the 16th, just move all of that to the evening of the 18th, starting there at 5 o'clock, and hold a special HRA meeting after the regular council meeting, so that we don't have to, at this point, try to find another night to do the special HRA meeting, which shouldn't take much time at all.
Does that work for everyone?
Well, yeah, on the 18th, there's a planning commission meeting, and a special council meeting before that.
Yeah, I have a conference. Yeah, that's what we talked about on the 18th, is that we were going to go at 5 o'clock.
Right now, we don't know what will be on the agenda for the 16th.
The 16th, you can make it, Sean?
No, it's the 18th, I'm having a conference. Now, I was hoping that, because we were going to try to get mostly done on the 16th, after our meeting. So we have this HRA thing as well now.
Can we just add the HRA to the 7 o'clock special council?
Could we do the HRA before? Would it take about a half hour?
Probably.
We could do a HRA meeting at 5:30 on the 16th, and then do the regular council, and then try to get through some of the budget thing, and still keep the 18th.
At 4:30.
What's that?
At 4:30. As we come in at?
No, no, on the 16th.
The 18th is when we were going to go at 5 o'clock.
I'm saying 5:30 on the 16th. We can do the HRA meeting from 5:30 to 6:00.
Yep.
We can do the council, hopefully, and then do the budget after that, and try to get it done in one day. And look at Mike, he's lost.
Well, we have a number of new members who have not been through it before.
Oh, I, no, no, I, I hear you. But if we have to go on the 18th, you know, Sean will just make, you know, he's been through it. And, you know, so, from that standpoint, he would probably have the least amount of questions. Wink, wink. So why don't we just, let's figure that out, and if we feel we have, you know, other issues?
Because I've got to notice it a week ahead of that, in order to have that notice properly, so I've got to set that up.
I would still keep it.
So I, I will go at 5 o'clock on the 18th.
Yes.
Is that likely that that would be a continuation of the special meeting?
And that's just going through the budget? When, are we making approval at that time, too?
We have to adopt it sometime in September.
Correct.
If we can get through it in those two nights, and again, we're not solving, for those that have been through the processes, we're not solving the final budget by any stretch of the imagination. We're setting the preliminary levy, and the adoption of that levy can only come down in the budget process, it can't go up. But it's also the levy that goes, that gets sent out with the truth of taxation notices in the latter part of November, ahead of the public hearing that we have in December. And I know, and looking at it with Patty already, is that, you know, that we've got some challenges to address in the process, and so there will be some likely good council policy debate and decisions on capital projects, special projects, along those lines, and so.
Okay.
And the 5:30 meeting was going to be called what again?
HRA.
HRA.
So plan on the HRA at 5:30 on the 16th, city council, and then we'll keep the city council special on the 16th, and I would tend to leave, keep the 18th available, and hopefully we can accomplish everything we need to do.
Oh, we'll set that as a continuation, just for purposes of public advertising, and whether we need it or not, we can either stick to it or cancel.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you. Next consent agenda, does anyone have any questions, issues on any items in the consent agenda?
Will you approve?
Second. We have a motion by Rick Soder, second by Sean Ryan. If there's no other comments or questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0. miscellaneous. Mitch?
I'm good.
How's school going?
Surprisingly well.
Okay, good. Patrick?
I'm fine, thank you.
All right. Jim?
Uh, just working on some things for Dzinki, and also today, the company, sorry, uh, came out with our rating for safe cities, and we were number six on the list for Minnesota for 2019.
Nice.
Which brought us up from, last year, actually, we were below the 20 mark last year. But it's based on crime report stats that get reported to the FBI, and they reviewed those, posted it on our Facebook.
Well, congratulations.
Good job, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Nothing for me.
Glenn?
This year's construction project is coming close to an end. Yes, I agree with you. They're hiring a work code on the old Cairo 37, 10th Avenue, Southeast and 7th Street, Southeast. Gave them permission to run tonight till 8 o'clock, and that should get them just a little bit west of Central Avenue North, to try to prevent some of the congestion that happens there early in the morning, parents dropping off, things like that. So I'm going to check on them here when I leave, but they had one truck left to get to the South Roundabout on the east side, so unless they have a breakdown, there should be no reason why they can't get to the west one block, from Columbus to Central North. And then naturally, you got punchless items, you always have punchless items, that's finishing dirt-around sidewalks, things like that, but the majority of it should be done after tomorrow.
Okay, and then they're striping on Saturday?
Yes.
What was the projected turnover date?
The projected date to the completion date was like August 26th, something like that. So they're, they're past that date now.
But did we allow, contractor allows for weather, circumstantial weather?
That's what we're discussing at this point, so. Yeah, they always have weather days in there, they can, they can claim them. Um, we'll just be happy with a good job and done. And then we'll have more discussion whether to go, need to go any farther, that's to be decided.
All right, cool.
Um, I thought the completion, expected completion is much earlier than I guess I was just.
We were expecting it to be done, like, the first part of August, in the contract. I'm sorry I don't have those dates, but if I look at my calendar, I can tell you. Substantial completion was supposed to be August 20, uh, let's see, yeah, August 23rd, final completion was supposed to be August 30th.
So substantial completion will be the end of this week, or beginning of next?
Final should be, well, substantial would be just like, um, the base coat out of road, and where would come after that. Completion, besides punchless items, we consider a project complete, and then we come out with what we call punchless items, final touch on, the fine tuning, you might call it.
So the completion will be this week?
Yes.
Technically?
What's that?
Technically.
Yeah.
Still got to go around the punch list.
Yeah.
What about the issue on the next up flip side there?
Uh, that's supposed to happen this Thursday, Thursday and Friday. We're going to do a subcut down 18 inches, starting from Main Street, going all the way to where they started with the new sanitary sewer line. Uh, we're going to put down what they call a geogrid fabric, uh, which bridges that soft area, I'll call it, and then put gravel on top of that to the top of the existing roadbed. That one caught us off-guard. We thought we were going to save a little bit of money, we thought we had a pretty good road there, we knew that we're going to have bad soils underneath. We expected to find a couple of feet of nice gravel on top, because besides the fact that you'd get some washouts, or I'll call them potholes, in that gravel road through the year, it always was a very solid road. We never expected the material to be as bad as it was, or is. So we didn't spend a load of money on engineering, and hindsight being 2020, I'm never doing that again. Going to full garment, or I'm not doing anything at all, because this one caught us from behind. So unfortunately, we got to walk to the.
So what do you think that will be finished?
Hopefully, mostly done by Friday afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Hopefully. I'm a little concerned with Mother Nature, they're talking rain now Thursday night, so that will be, wait to see.
Okay.
But once they get into it, it shouldn't take them very long. I mean, they're only subcutting 18 inches, that's not a lot of material.
Did we discuss that already, or have you informed us of that before?
I think I've mentioned it, in some degree. Uh, I don't know that I would have mentioned the 18-inch subcut, because I don't, we just pretty much came up with that in the last couple of weeks. So you were probably not aware of the 18-inch subcut.
We were talking about the line, when we asked whether it was going to be charged here, and they said no. And that's probably. And that's probably the example right there, what's going to happen next year in the, you know, Main Street. I know St. Paul's about the same age as this city.
Don't jinx us, no.
Beware, what are you doing?
On Main Street, they'll be pulling most of that material off. That's a plan down there.
Okay.
That's all of that.
All right. Ken?
Nothing.
All right. Michael?
Only one item as we received, or I did this past week, I think it was, town hall board, but GME has informed us that they will not be removing their contract with the city for 2020, so we'll have to begin talking with the golf board and staff, and taking a look at alternative options as to where we think we need to go with that, so. So that and work continues on the 2020 planning, pretty much weekly, and I think that's the other hand to go, whereas as much as you'd rather it be done with the 2019 project, the 2020 project is still in the forefront in a number of areas, and so we're working in earnest with the engineers on that as well.
Okay. Anything else? Barb? Sean?
A couple of real quick things. How often do we change the, the street name signs? You know, on Third and Horizon, they're really faded, and they're hard to read.
That would be when we'll come around and change them?
The sun bleached, so I just want to make you aware that...
Third and Horizon?
Yeah. And then, right there on Fourth and Doherty, that street light, I think, is out, or it was.
Fourth and Doherty.
Right across from the mayor's house there.
Okay.
There's a street light there that's...
All right.
Last night Sean was shooting all the names.
Maybe it was just out that one day.
I'll let the line department know.
It was shining in my window.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, what was the other, the street sign faded where?
About Third and Horizon.
Third and Horizon.
There's a couple of them right there, yeah.
Got it.
In the townhomes there.
Okay.
And I think the council member Ryan's first question is that, as we've done any of the reconstruction projects, we have changed outside each area of that.
Oh, most definitely.
And so the other, the other ones are kind of a maintenance item, as we see them, if they have been replaced as part of that kind of schedule.
We put, we put close to twenty thousand a year in the street sign replacement in our budget, and that doesn't cover all the street signs we should replace.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that.
So...
We'll purchase items from Minna.
Yeah. No, we don't buy from Minna. So street signs are, they're kind of getting to be a big ticket item, and just as Mike said, we didn't see that years past, because when we do a development, we'd replace it part of the development. Well, we don't have that happening anymore, so.
Maybe we can work out a deal with the Lee Sur County New Justice Center, maybe we can put on a wood shop, they can make street signs.
Yeah.
Don't laugh, honey. Rick, you got anything?
You should be proud of me, I actually left the Minna one to a loss, but now one to a loss.
You must want to see Brad pretty. Bruce?
Unfortunately, I haven't got a few things. Jim, on the police report, I'm just curious, how we treat homeless, I saw that was a note. Item on the police report, I'm just wondering, how do we treat them?
We work to find services for them. Last week, we did have one that was, he had lived in town for several months, and got kicked out of a couple of different places that he was living. So we worked with him. We use Salvation Army and CAP Agency from Scott County to deliver any services we can. Ultimately, he had a place to stay in Fairmont, so our goal was to get him transported down there. We looked into the cost of a taxi and see, to see what funds were available to pay for them. By the afternoon, he had somebody coming up to pick him up, so we got his own transportation down there then.
Those are the things you don't see in the report, and it disappeared like we encountered. Okay, that was the end of the story, huh? Okay, thank you. And I'm assuming we get this, but I'm not, I'm just not sure. You look at the police report, they seem to be in groups of medical, domestic, or traffic, and things like that. Do we get an identization of that annually, showing what the encounters, like you mentioned, you sent this to the FBI? Do we see those breakdowns?
Uh, yeah, I can get you stats.
But is that something you normally provide to the city on an annual basis?
Yeah.
Then what are your normal?
Okay.
Where do you get that budget type?
Usually April, isn't it?
Yeah. And I don't think they were delivered this year. I have them on my desk, but I'll get them to you.
Anything else?
You brought up the golf course, I know it says running a little behind the plane. How do you feel it's going?
Been a weird year. If I was a farmer, or owned a golf course, it's tough.
Well, the snow at the start of the season in...
Grounds are down.
Was not...
And the rain, yeah. This is only through the July, and it's, I'm surprised it's not worse.
Well, except in there, you do, well, you got revenue and expenses for that claim of the insurance. So you had revenue?
Revenue.
Yes. And then there's expenses of thirty-nine some, and that's up to about nine thousand dollars in our favor. But, yeah, it's, grounds are down, so yes, not a good year, but hopefully.
Ken, not specifically to talk about this variance that we talked about today, but just the variances in general. And I have the old stuff in my mind from before when I was planning and zoning, but we just always have to define a hardship and be able to answer, what is the hardship?
There's no hardship standard anymore.
Practical difficulty standard?
Yeah, the Supreme Court had actually changed the standard to a practical difficulty. There's a three-part test, if it's reasonable, um...
Unique and essential character.
Yep, so that's...
Essential character is defined as what?
It's not a very strict standard. It's basically at the discretion of the council. It's a much less stringent standard than, than you would remember from being on the planning commission.
What is essential charac, what does that mean? What is it?
Basically, it would...
The low aesthetics, or?
It's partly that, mainly what it's for is that you would not grant a use variance, so allow a commercial business in a residential area, for example. So it really opened up what you can grant variances for. It's, it's not strict, at all. They went from an undue hardship to practical difficulty standard.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Okay. The only thing that I have, and Lynn and I shared our very fine meal at McDonald's tonight, but is, I'm going to have Lynn take a look at the ceiling at the golf course that has asbestos, because some of it did fall down. And I think we need to look at that, try to get that rectified, maybe, so. Lynn's going to sneak by there.
Check for friable, is that what you're going to, what happens first?
We have already had that inspection.
Yeah.
Is there friable? There wasn't until that just broke up. That's, yeah, I would, I should just get that done.
Yeah, or, yes, it was a concern that was brought up at the development, so.
What, how to get it, which?
In that kitchen area.
And we knew that we had asbestos in there, and, you know, Lynn and I looked at the bid, that we got a year, about a year ago, like...
Yep, 2018.
Yeah, paid three development fees, so hopefully, we can see it and see what kind of timeline this, this company can get, see if they can clean it up.
We'll do that.
It would be nice to see, I wonder if we can get a group deal and get that...
We talked about that already, and that was a no-go, because it is, it's a, it is what it is. It's asbestos, you got, there's no...
I know, I'm thinking that...
So many companies, so many companies.
I used to do it, I mean, you know, the prices of, of payments are going to just keep going up and up and up, I don't know why we don't get a ton.
Well, you'll have that choice in the budget, because put together, the economics of doing certain things, and the council made certain policy choices to either do projects or not do projects. So it can be done at any time, if the money's provided for the budget.
Okay.
I would like to bring up, I thought, carrying down the restrooms in Memorial Park, could that be included in the Main Street project? I'm just trying to understand.
No, because of the funding?
Because it's state.
State and federal.
Okay.
We even, we even looked at doing a couple of the projects. That's the reason, the sewer line and Third Avenue Northwest happened this year. We were planning on doing it on the Main Street project, and there was just no way it's going to get...
Yeah, it makes sense, it's got to stay clean.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second by Rick Siler. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition? We're out of here. Thank you, everyone.